I'll call to order the August 8 regular business meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll remind those in attendance tonight, if you wish to speak during public comment or citizen's comment, or sign up sheets in the back of the room. Do any members of council have anything they wish to present before we get started? Mr. Marks?
Well, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't extend birthday wishes to our city manager.
Today your birthday, Mr. Hamp?
It is. Thank you, Councilman Marks.
Well, I would also say we'd like to... Elzina's birthday is today.
Oh. Does that mean we have to sing now?
Well, it seems like we ought to be singing.
Wrong at first. No, I don't think we need to sing.
Must be a very good day for many years, that's all I can say. Anything else under a serious note? More serious? If not, the first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda as our motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Is there a move?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item three is to hold a public hearing to receive comment and consider introducing an ordinance regarding a rezoning request by Basic Wits Heritage LLC owner to rezone a property from H1 Heavy Industrial to L1 Light Industrial at 215 Fifth Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, tax mapped number 36-2-2. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen, members of council, the first order of business regarding this application is to receive the report and recommendation from the Planning Commission, which considered -- which conducted their public hearing and considered the application at their July 19 meeting and voted at that time six to zero to recommend approval in accordance with the staff report.
Is there a motion to receive the report and recommendation of Planning Commission?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. The report and recommendations are received, and now Mr. Barnes will give us the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. This application is for the -- at the corner of Fifth Street and Commerce over by Augusta Lumber. You can see a picture of it here. The owner is the Basic Wits Heritage LLC company. The owner is seeking to rezone the property from Heavy Industrial, HI, to Light Industrial, LI. The property consists of a single-story building about 10,000 square feet. It was used formerly as an office building, and the desired use is to use it for an office building with some limited storage uses in the building. The reason it's sort of necessitated to sort of change the zonings to support still what is truly an office use now is that the subject property used to be part of the Augusta Lumber complex, and I believe was probably served as the offices for the complex at one time. It's pretty much set up as an office building internal to the building, but office uses aren't allowed in heavy industrial districts. Previously, it was sort of an auxiliary building to the larger complex. By rezoning it to light industrial, it's actually sort of a down zoning, but it brings it in conformity with what the building is designed for, what its really intended purpose is. Staff really found very little issues with this particular rezoning. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed use is suitable for the site. There's limited to no environmental impacts. Only what I've mentioned is that the building is in the floodplain, but relatively shallow in the floodplain, so I'm not even quite sure that the... We didn't go and find an elevation certificate for the building because the applicant is not proposing to do any renovations and therefore would not be required to make any improvements to floodproof the building, but it... Regardless, it's safe to say it's almost at the... out of the floodplain. There are public utilities, and actually, this is sort of less impacts to the neighborhood by moving it from Heavy Industrial to Light Industrial, and thus, sort of moving in the direction of being more compatible with the residential uses that are across the street. Staff on this particular one recommends approval of the zoning application without any conditions. And of course, you've received your similar recommendation from the Planning Commission. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions, Mr. Barnes? Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I'll hereby open the public hearing.
Mayor Allen, we do not have anyone signed up to speak. However, it's our practice to allow the applicant to make comments if they're present and would like to do so.
We are not the actual owners of the business. We were just representing. We're the ones looking to get inside the building, to run the business, our personal business inside the building. We're just office space. We run a transport trucking business, so basically, we're just on the phone, on the computer, and that's all we'd be doing there.
All right. Anybody have any questions? If not, thank you, Jonah.
Thank you.
All right. I'll hereby close the public hearing. Any other questions from council? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. This and other ordinance is introduced this evening will be considered at the August 22 meeting of City Council. Item four is to receive a report and recommendation from Mr. Dwayne Jones, Director of Parks and Rec, regarding recommended steps to establish a park at the closed landfill north of North Winchester Avenue. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, members of council, exciting to be with you here this evening and present what's been an ongoing project for both the City of Parks and Rec Department and as well as the Public Works Department. I'll give you just a brief overview of the project. This is a shot looking at the landfill, I believe, just prior to the city taking ownership. This is dated 1979, and you can see the scar, if you will, that it was known back then. When the city decided to go to a regional cooperative of Ethelwood, Stanton, Augusta County, as you remember, we take our refuse there. At the time, city management, Parks and Rec, Public Works, and a lot of folks involved said, you know, this is kind of a neat site, lots of views, and it'd be a shame just to let it be an empty landfill that's covered. So at that time, the city council actually made the decision to, with a simple plan, to design an access road and a flat plateau that would allow for future development should further councils and the city decide that it would be suitable for a park habitat. And so this is a look, a recent shot, and this is looking slightly to the north, and you can see the capped area that's in this front section, and of course, the road was designed to allow for traffic to come and go. This is an area looking to the south, and I think most of you have been up there, and it is quite a spectacular view of the city. Public Works, several years later, sort of picked up on the project. They manage it because it was a... it is the refuse center, or was the refuse center. They still operate out of there today. And so they began holding Public Works Day up at the site, and so the public interest was very strong at those events. Folks saw the view, they got a chance to glimpse and see what was available, and sort of continued that process of transferring it from active landfill or capped landfill potentially to a park setting. We obtained some funding from the Department of Forestry back in 2013, and in 14, we worked with the Virginia Tech Community Design Assistance Center to develop a basically conceptual plan to move it from an idea to talk about different ways to implement and what kind of things that we think as a city, and we had some public input on that of what the park should look like. In that park, that master plan really had three areas of focus. One was an improved entrance area. It is still, again, an active storage area for the city refuse vehicles. The second part of that was the top area, how to develop a parking area and connection to the trails, and then finally, the linkages from the trails, which are both hiking and biking trails. And this is one example of, just to orient you, this is sort of the Baylor Building, and this is the entrance, and just some of the ways that we could deal with sort of improving that entrance to the public. The second part dealt with the top area here, and this actually was a... this area is very flattened off, and the students had come up with some different ideas, very low-maintenance ideas. One of those was sort of a vista that would take you out. There would be an informational kiosk that you could look out and say, you know, how far is it to Stanton, and what is this industry down there? So educational purpose as well. They also came up with the idea, which we thought was a good one, was sort of wildflower meadows. They're very low-maintenance, but potentially colorful from down on Main Street. And if you've been up there, it is a very windy site, and obviously, a great place to fly a kite. Very passive, again, as from a recreation standpoint. The other connection was the connection to the trails, and all of you are familiar, I'm sure, with the Crozet Tunnel, but you may not be familiar with the property. It goes all the way down. This is the Virginia Power Right-of-Way. This is Jones Hollow, and then all the way up here is the entrance to the Crozet Tunnel. You can see there, the property actually extends very close to that. Now, I will tell you, it is a challenge. It parallels the active rail line, but we think ultimately there could be some connections and trails to the Crozet Tunnel, which this council and others have supported over the years. This is just a sample of what some of it may look like. We do think it's important to have informational signage, kiosks, and things like this, so folks would know where they are on the trails, how long the trails are, and the difficulty of the trails. We have been working with a local nonprofit called the River City Alto Recreation Association. They are a group made up of various citizens here locally, and they've been active in trying to develop mountain bike park or mountain bike trails in that area. They've actually had a couple of workdays, and there are some trails that they're beginning to develop. And those trails, they've worked with some various folks, and those trails... whoops. Those trails are these various trails, and the different color relate to the various abilities. One thing that we had talked with them early on was that we would like it for it to be available for the average kid and all the way up to sort of an expert level, and so we think we've, with their help, have designed some trails in there that would meet those purposes. Most of the bike trails, again, this is what's called a single-track mountain bike trail. Just a sample of what it would look like. We also think there would be shared-use trails, not only for walking and biking, so that those two, those obviously would be wider sections of the park that we would use. And all of the sections of the trails are on the uncapped portion of the landfill. I just want to let you know that. Nothing takes place on the capped area, which there's restrictions from EPA and what can take place on the cap, but really, two-thirds of the park is... there is no trash. There's monitoring wells and things like that, but there is no cap in that section, so the limitations, we do have some flexibility with different things we do on that section of the park. So the plan that the folks at Virginia Tech came up with, a different phasing plan of ways to build that and focus on different parts from the direction of council, we refined that first rate recommendations, and basically, what it comes down to is what we've dubbed the Safe Public Access. Obviously, with capped landfill, it is not open to the public, was not closed and designed in a way that allows for public. You certainly can get service road and service vehicles, but there are various safety concerns that we are concerned about. And so the engineering services, we completed in two phases. The first phase is a preliminary and schematic design, and basically, it's a review of the existing information and mapping. We'd meet with relevant staff, both refuse, public works, parks and rec, evaluation of the security and signage issues. Obviously, there's no... there's some fencing on the core, but a lot of the property areas are not fenced. Also, the gas probe and monitoring well protection, and when I mean protection, the... certainly, the park is safe to be in. There's no gas emitted that is harmful. We're talking about protecting the gas from the public. We need to protect those sensitive equipment from the public that may not know what it is or may stumble upon it, and so we want to protect those sensitive equipment from the public. There's also a cell tower up there, and there are some potential impacts there. Our plan has sort of avoided that area, but that needs to have a little bit closer look. Also, some different access road options, entrance options and schematics, initial construction phase recommendation, and an estimated construction cost. The second phase of that would build on what came out of the first phase would be a field survey, design, a final design of the entrance and what it would look like. Again, currently now, we would coexist, if it were to open, we would coexist with the refuse operation, but there's ways, I think, and I think with some proper design, that can make those two activities marry together very well. There's also different design access roads to the parking area, initial parking area, again, following up on the signage, security, and different things we'd need to have it open. Also, protection, again, designs and how we'd actually protect the probes and the monitoring wells. Finally, an ENS and stormwater plan, and it went in with developing specification, contract documents, and also bidding and bid evaluation phase. So this actually next phase would get us to an actual set of plans that we could send out to bid. We'd have some preliminary cost estimates, and so that would take us to that next level to take it, again, into the next phase. And I will just open it up for questions, if anything specific.
One question, I saw your... the plans approximately, how far is it from Sunset Park to the tunnel entrance?
It really depends on the access of where you cross, either under, over, or around the tracks. We are dealing with that now with the Crozet Tunnel project. At its closest point, it's literally probably less than a half a mile, so it is very close. Now, whether that crossing is appropriate, because you still have to cross 250, which we... there are obviously better places to do that. The traffic coming down the mountain is kind of fast, and so there may be areas to move that closer to Waynesboro to have a better crossing. So we haven't really gotten to that point yet, but by the way, the crow flies, if you were to walk to the very end of the property and get there, it's probably less than a half a mile to the entrance to the tunnel.
In all reality, we would probably have to follow the railroad tracks up going east till we could get to the east side of the underpass, correct?
Correct. We could do that, or again, potentially cross under somewhere that's appropriate, and then have some type of pedestrian cross and on 250. And again, that's difficult as you get closer up the mountain, but it's easier as you come, as traffic slows, and it flattens, and your sight angles change as you come into Waynesboro. So there's a lot of options there, but I think it's doable. It certainly is a long-term reach. Crozet Tunnel is just getting started with their next phase, which is inside the tunnel and then the western connector, so there's still some time before that's open and walkable, so... but I think we have some time to work out those details of how to make that connection. And if you don't make the connection, I still think there's ways to not only, if you're coming to mountain bike or just bike in the area, oh, by the way, here's the Crozet Tunnel. You enter, and there's a brochure to come to Sunset Park at the end of it, so.
Over on the east side of the property of the... our closed dump, how close would some of our trails come to current residential houses?
We've actually designed the trails to be well off of that property line, and again, most of those are single-track mountain bike trails. Obviously, there are signs to mark when you're passing onto private property, and there are signs passing onto our property for folks that pass on there. I think we can improve on that, have some better signage, some better areas that we can pick up so that the public knows when they've left park property onto private property, but we've been cognizant of that, and most of those mountain bike trails are, I think, at a good, safe distance from the few surrounding houses.
Thank you. Is any other questions?
Maybe. Go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, I've been up there on several occasions, and as you pointed out, it's a unique site, and I think it would behoove the city as we see the feasibility to pursue this as quickly as they can, because it's something we can hold out for tourism and economic development and everything else. So I hope we can find a way to move ahead and get this done.
Actually, that was a good segue to my question. Next question. In the ideal, or in your timeframe, things sometimes don't work out like we'd like it to. What kind of timeframe we're looking at?
The preliminary phase is probably the engineering, just talking strictly engineering. The first phase is probably two months, 60 days or so. The second phase and following up there is probably 90 days, so you're probably looking at start to finish six months or so to have a... as built are drawings and potentially going out to bid, and obviously, part of that first process would be developing cost, so that the city, we could come back to council and say, this is what this costs, this is what a limited parking area costs, this is what the entrance changes cost. So we would have a really good idea of where it goes for. Now, I will say, from a park planning standpoint, they're not playgrounds, there's not sports fields, there's no irrigation. It is a very passive park, much like you would come and pick up a trailhead on the Appalachian Trail. So in those terms, once it's completed, I think the costs are very... relatively low with respect to the use. Obviously, making it safe and guardrails and preparing gas monitoring wells, those costs are probably going to drive it up slightly, but again, once those are safe and the area's open, I think the next phase, as far as developing trails, is relatively inexpensive compared to building soccer fields or pavilions and things like that.
Any other questions, Mr. Jones? Comments about moving forward from each council member? Mr. Freeman?
I'm excited about the possibilities, and it is a great view, and we... if we move as we move, it'd be great.
Ms. Anderson?
I'm excited. I'm looking forward to seeing it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
I'd just say, you know, I was one of those first families that attended the Public Works Day up on top of Sunset Park, and, you know, you're moving 800 miles away from the only place you've ever known, and you go up on top, and you wonder if you made the right decision. And that view, you know you made the right decision. It's absolutely beautiful, it's stunning. I think, you know, building a great city requires building great places, and this could be a great place for the city, and I think an important recreational and cultural asset for the east side of our city, and certainly something that every resident and tourist could enjoy at a very nominal investment, when I think you've kind of spoken to that. So I certainly support exploring what those soft costs may be to open it up, and would certainly support that recommended appropriation that staff has provided.
Thank you, Mr. Short. I'd say move forward, Mr. Jones. Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
Item five is to consider approving an application from the Parks and Rec Department to serve alcohol beverages on city property in accordance with all relevant alcohol beverage control regulations on Saturday, September 3, 2016, at the Royal Memorial Park as part of the Tour de Valley cycling event. Mr. Hamp?
Gentlemen and Ms. Anderson, this is the Tour de Valley, what historically was known as the Sentry Ride, and for years, it was organized and conducted by a local cycling club. Several years ago, the club was experiencing some membership and... not membership issues, but had identified and determined that they could no longer coordinate the event themselves. They approached our Department of Recreation, which has a terrific reputation for event coordination and, at the time, running event coordination in particular, and asked if the city would be interested in assuming responsibility to conduct the event. We've had two successful events since that conversation occurred. The event concludes with a social activity that the members like to enjoy alcohol beverage, and in order to serve alcoholic beverages on city property, the council has to give the authority to do so, and that is the primary reason why this application comes for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Any questions from council? Is there a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries five oh. Item six A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the governmental technical reserves in the amount of $8,500 to the general fund to provide funding for additional costs to maintain the necessary internet service for the city government. Mr. Hamp?
In May of this year, as we were concluding work on the budget, our staff learned that we were enjoying a service level of internet service provision for which we were not paying. And in conversation with Lumos, our service provider, the staff have identified that what we... what the organization requires is a level of service that exceeds what we've budgeted for the current fiscal year. And when I say city internet service, this is the internet service that our municipal departments and facilities rely on to perform their work, everything from very limited and routine work, such as I might perform on the internet, basic research, to more complicated and critical functions for which the public safety, police, fire, EMS, dispatch rely. Mr. Gary Choat and Mr. Gary Kreitzer have confirmed that we need a higher level of service, and this appropriation ordinance makes up the difference in what we have budgeted this year and what that service requires in terms of cost. And those gentlemen will examine further during the course of this fiscal year and identify subsequent recommendations that may be necessary to ensure that we have adequate service level and reliability for municipal operations.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Any questions from council? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Item six B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the school maintenance reserve in the amount of $58,295 for transfer to the school fund to be used for the installation of track structural spray and lining for resurfacing the school track. Mr. Hamp?
This ordinance refers to the track that is on the soccer field complex. This is the newer of the two tracks, and the one that is used for scholastic competition and for use by the general public, walking and running, et cetera. The track was installed around 2007 and has... The track was installed around 2007 and has about an expected life of 10 or so years. Dr. Castle and the city staff, excuse me, Dr. Castle and the school staff have confirmed that the track really needs to be resurfaced at this point, and failure to do so may require subsequently work that is more of repair in nature and less of maintenance, less of a maintenance nature, and with that, some additional expense. So this is a maintenance of the current track, and again, the ordinance that's presented for your consideration takes the funding for the project from that school facility reserve.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Any questions from council members?
Say the life is about 10 years?
Yes, sir.
And how long has it been?
About 10 years. I think it was installed in 2006 or 2007, so we're either at nine or 10 years.
It's a great track.
That's what I've heard.
Sounded good, didn't it?
Yeah.
Just about when the warranty runs out. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item seven A is to consider reappointing two members to the Historical Commission, each for a four-year term ending August the 31st, 2020. Mr. Hamp?
Dr. Amy Tillerson Brown and Ms. Andrea Jackson presently serve on the Historical Commission, are eligible for reappointment, and wish to be reappointed.
Is there a motion to reappoint Dr. Amy Tillerson Brown and Mrs. Andrea Jackson to the Historical Commission, each for a four-year term ending August the 31st, 2020?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five o. Item seven B is to consider reappointing two members to the Parks and Rec Commission for four-year terms ending August the 31st, 2020. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Robert Kirkendall and Ms. Donna Oenby are both eligible for reappointment.
Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Robert Kirkendall and Mrs. Donna Oenby to the Parks and Rec Commission for four-year terms ending August the 31st, 2020?
So moved.
Mr. Freeman? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five o. Item seven C is to consider appointing a council member to the Planning Commission for a two-year term ending August the 31st, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
Ms. Elzina Anderson's name is presented for council's consideration.
Is there a motion to appoint Mrs. Anderson to the Planning Commission for two-year term ending June the 30th, 2018?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five o. Item seven D is to consider appointing a member of City Council to the CAPSOL Board of Directors for a two-year term ending June the 30th, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
Ms. Elzina Anderson again.
All right. Is there a motion to appoint Mrs. Anderson to the CAPSOL Board for a term ending June the 30th, 2018?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five o. Communications, correspondence, and calendar.
I have one very brief positive item. Earlier this summer, the employees, municipal employees, primarily in this building, participated in a food drive coordinated by the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank and collected 82 pounds of food, for which we're told, or from which, we're told 98 meals can be provided to needy individuals in our community, and I thought that was an effort worthy of mention.
That's good information. Anything else?
No, sir.
Citizens' comment period?
Mr. Bill Kirkendall.
Mr. Kirkendall, you'll give us your name and address, please, sir.
Absolutely. William Kirkendall, 109 Holland Circle, Waynesboro, Virginia.
Thank you, sir.
I have, I've listened to you talk about the Croze Tunnel. I've listened to you talk about the landfill, and all that's all well and good. I haven't heard one thing, other than the fact that you're going to resurface the track or that there's money to resurface the track at probably the only soccer field that's regulation size in the whole Shenandoah Valley, and I'm really happy for that. I think it needs it. I know other people have rented that facility in order to use it, so it does bring some money into the school district, I believe. My request is this: I haven't heard one thing mentioned about the progress of moving on to a new high school, whether it be renovated, whether it be built. I don't want to see this issue get buried somewhere. I don't want to see it take second spot to whatever else happens in the city. I think it needs to be out in front of the public, and I think it needs to be in front of City Council. My request is that somewhere in your agenda, that you have an opportunity to make a comment as to progress, not specifics, but just progress, where we are, you know, maybe even how many times you've met, if there's any movement one way or the other, maybe the possibility of having a public meeting to talk about that. As I said, I just don't want to see it get buried, and I don't think you want to see it get buried either. And this request, I'll not only make to you, but I'll make it to the school board when I go there, because I think both of you have made an effort to really start to work together on this, and I think it's important that it stays out in front so that the community knows what's going on in details that you can, you can give. I'm not talking about specifics. You understand that, I understand that. But I think it needs to be, I need, I think it needs to be part of your agenda to make it a point, to at least mention whenever you can, the progress that's being made, and I just think we need to move forward as quickly as possible, as efficiently as possible, to get us a new high school. I know the other day, when it rained so hard, the parking lot was flooded, water was coming back up through the drain rather than going down, and I understand that's part of the stormwater and, you know, the situation that we have with that. I know there are leaks in the building. I don't want it to become unsafe for kids. I want it to be a project that moves efficiently forward and comes to a, really, a good conclusion for this city, because I think when you talk about your industrial park and putting people in there, it's important that we have a, that we have a good high school to look at, that we have good elementary schools, the whole nine yards. Kate Collins is probably the showcase of the city's, you know, as far as that's concerned, and maybe one of your elementary schools. We need more than that, and we need it as soon as possible. So I thank you for your, for your ability to start to work on that. I just think we need to keep it out in front of the public in order to make it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm going to break one of my own rules. I usually do not encourage comments when we get into public comment at the mic, but we probably would have had another report for you tonight. We had a meeting scheduled for last week, but because of a conflict in the calendar and everybody meeting, we had to change it to this coming Wednesday. So we'll have a meeting. At our last meeting, which I thought you was here, Vice Mayor Short gave a little update about what we had done at, at the first meeting that we've had, and we haven't had a meeting since, but we plan to continue to give updates to keep everybody exposed to what's happening and what process we're going through and the time schedule we're doing it, and I think we're going to get it done right this time, and so we're definitely working on it. So with that, I'll shut my mouth.
I would just add that there's not a day that goes by that, that one of us aren't talking about it or thinking about it, so it's, it's absolutely a priority, and we get that.
And we're having, we're having a lot of conversation amongst not just this group here, but between staff and between school board members also. So we're on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.